The chance of them meeting an interventionist is slim to none.
But I think we're talking about students that maybe have learning disabilities, maybe some behavioral issues.
So this is.
It's not always title.
Engagement issue necessarily.
Right.
A lot of learning issues.
So ESL on Title I.
Those are our biggest ones.
Those are your biggest ones.
We got kids after Christmas that came in speaking absolutely no English, not being able to read or write in their first language. So.
So you're saying.
Sometimes it's just life experiences and we can't control it when they get there.
Right.
I mean, this is the next best option.
Yeah, and I totally hear the one that's saying that. And I hope you understand what I'm trying to say too. And I know that this district is working both ends. Don't say.
I'd like to ask, what's the average number of students that an interventionist might see in a day?
It varies. It was, yeah, it does vary. It depends on how many Tier Two or Tier Three. But I would, I don't know, I would say maybe fifty on average.
Per day.
Per day. We have a lot of interventionists here, so I'm looking for approval.
In the fall, it's very, very busy. In the spring, because we have this MTSS in place, it, our workload does become significantly less because you will see off of our AIDS data how many of our kids move out of the tiers. Our Tier Two groups may be half or significant, but that's a good thing than our Tier Threes. So our Tier Threes significantly decrease.
Is there a level at which interventions, there is more intervention, or do you have more interventionist at the lower grade levels and the higher?
It's more of how many students per building is how many interventionists each building has and how they choose to use their Title I funding.
I think that, and I think maybe the direction we're going in, do you think kindergarteners have more interventions than us? What we've seen over the last couple of years, because we're so focused especially in reading on MTSS, we brought in a program in our building called Phonics Eclipse Boost. It quickly spread to the elementary levels. So ours now sit on the shelf because by the time the kids get to us, when we first started, we had probably fifty or sixty kids in phonics. Today, we're lucky if we can fill a group of five because the elementary's got the phonics down. So what we're now doing is we're finding out that is, ours is a huge vocabulary issue. Our kids can do phonics, they can read really quickly, but they have a limited vocabulary, limited comprehension. So it changes what we have to do with it.
That's what I'm saying, but you came full circle back to me. What can we implement that is vocabulary based to do the same thing that that program did for phonics?
We found one.
We found one we're working with.
That's where I want to spend as much, you know, time and attention as we can, not, again, not to replace interventionists.
No, they took our programs. We had to come up with something.
I got you.
So Gina, I might clarify a little bit here too. So in a perfect world, we'd have more money and we'd be hiring more interventions.
Sorry.
The reason that we're having this conversation is not a dollar issue today. Hopefully it won't become that. It's a manpower issue. The research is very clear that if school-based, the most important school-based factor in the quality of a student's education is their core classroom teacher. The MTSS model is very clear that you have to have solid core instruction before you get into these other pieces that provide important support. And Mr. Hogan shared, I think we have twenty-eight long-term subs is what we started the year with. We had thirty-eight positions that went open last year, so ten positions were absorbed. You're going to hear later tonight about the additional efforts that we're putting in recruiting. You've heard in the last few meetings that we're trying to take a deeper look at retention and understand the issue from that standpoint. But one of the realities that we're dealt with is between our intervention program, which we need it, we need a quality intervention program, our instructional coaching program, and our library media program, we have over eighty positions where we have certified teachers in those positions. And so the question really becomes, in terms of aligning resources, can we offer a quality intervention program with, that uses fewer certified staff so that some of that resource could be used to help us fill the gaps that we're experiencing right now in our core classroom positions? We're going to continue to recruit, we're going to continue to look at retention and try to address those programs or those issues through those areas. But we're in a difficult spot and it's not just in Garden City. You can talk to our neighbors, big and small, you can talk to others across the state and others across the country, and they're feeling the effects of a teacher shortage. I really appreciate the work that this committee has done. It's not easy to look at this. There's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears that have went into these programs. And again, in an ideal situation, we'd be adding more to them. But we might have to do things differently for a short period of time. But the end goal here is providing the best overall education to our students. And just like we said earlier with the last group, change isn't easy. So we have to make some changes to do that. Those changes could be a result of trying to what, trying to do what is best for our kids. Now, Board, you're going to hear this presentation, you're going to hear another one at a future meeting from the instructional coach committee, you're going to hear another one from the library media committee. But this isn't ultimately, unless you tell me differently, this is an administrative decision on how we use our resources. And these groups are also reporting to my team. We've been working with the building administrators. And as we see what's going on with our recruiting, we'll look for a solution that hopefully will move us forward addressing that core instruction along with, if we have to make changes where we can still maintain quality programs. They won't be the ultimate quality. There'll have to be some sacrifice if we have to do that. But they still will be programs that we believe will be of enough quality that we don't disadvantage our kids overall by the changes that we make. But as you can see, some very difficult decisions. And the scarce resource here is the manpower. I appreciate the fact that this group looked at this and came up with a number of different things that, different ways we could go about it if we had fewer people available for intervention roles. But all, and also tried to identify some of the pitfalls, some of the disadvantages to those things. But we'll persevere through this. We're doing Grow Your Own, we're, you know, we're working more with universities. This is a cyclical thing and we'll recover from it. But we've got kids that are in our schools now, next year and the year after. And I would not have been doing my job if we just waited until this summer and said, oh wow, this is getting even tougher to find teachers than it was last year. I hope our recruiting efforts, and you'll hear here in a few minutes, some of the things we're doing to double down on that. I hope they minimize the need or eliminate the need to make any changes. But we've got to, we've got to be prepared to make some changes if the situation falls for it. And so Janet Raffiella volunteered to lead this committee. Other people volunteered to be on the committee. Like any committee, you know, it's a lot, it's hard work. But these are especially hard work because it's an emotional issue as well as a, as well as a fact-based issue. So thank you for all your work. And if we do end up making changes to this program or any program, we'll probably be relying, we'll probably be talking to those committees again because the goal's going to be to make the best decisions we can. And really putting kids at the center of what's best for our students is what will have to drive those decisions.
I don't want to put you on the spot and to make a little free not to recap. My question would be, what's the advantage for you being an interventionist rather than a classroom teacher? Why would you choose to be an interventionist rather than a classroom teacher personally?
Is that what you're asking? But my favorite part about what I do as an interventionist is I have a group of three kids an hour a day and I get to see them grow in all kinds of different ways and really get to see the impact that I make with those kids in reading. I feel like I'm an expert in reading now after being an interventionist, I know a lot about that. As far as, I don't know if there's an advantage or disadvantage about not being a classroom teacher. I just chose to, I was in the classroom for nine years and then decided to be an interventionist. I just, I don't know. Felt like I wanted to go work with those small groups of kids, those ones that, like you said, if we could, if they could, you know, we could find something that can click with them, then maybe that would be it, so.
I did have a question too. At the beginning, you talked about there would be some diminution in the quality of the intervention program and reuse intervention staff. If there was a reduction in the interventionist staff, would the criteria for being an intervention or would the number of students or the length of time of intervention necessarily have to change as well?
The time wouldn't necessarily change, it'd be the number of students we could ultimately serve. We would have to go with our lowest students first. Now we can hit some of those kids that are just right there that we need to push over, so.
But would the criteria for being eligible from a student standpoint to get into intervention change?
Would you follow the MTSS guidelines? We have really specific on, like, this is the cutoff for Tier, for our Tier Three kids. So if we're going to continue being an MTSS district, then we would follow the Kansas guidelines.
Does the group size, is that part of those criteria? Do you necessarily have to have a larger group when you do, if you were an interventionist?
Ultimately, yes.
And so that delivers the, a bat or something?
Can you tell me when we started having interventionists in our district, what year was it? I mean, the definition was 2010, but like, was that when we started or?
No. We really had interventionists in our district for many, many years, ever since we had Title I funding. We may have called them different things, we called them Chapter One teachers, Title One teachers. But about 2003, we had the reading first grant and we were going to have more money to hire coaches and interventionists. We changed their roles a little bit and they became, we called them interventionists because that's what they did.
And really developed the structure that we have in place now with those four schools that were reading first at the time. It was a very structured program to give us something that was a lot like what we have current.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Carlin was back, we should just say thank you and leave because he really, yeah, segued right into my presentation. Stole my thunder, so we'll play a joke. Okay, so I'm here to talk about recruiting, a recruiting update for the board. I feel like I've talked a lot about teacher shortage, recruiting, kind of where our situation is. But tonight's going to be a little bit different angle in terms of, we know about the teacher shortage, now what are we doing to impact that? Recruiting has always been hard work in this district. Even when times were good, the district had to really have a pointed effort in terms of how and what we did with recruiting. So we typically have between a twelve and twenty percent turnover in our district. We're looking at that with our retention group. But that equates to us hiring anywhere between sixty and a hundred positions a year. Geography, not our friend. We really have candidates that say, there's no trees, there's no water. We do have tornadoes, not a vague attractor, sometimes that association with Kansas is, but it's certainly there. We get lots of questions and as a matter of fact, I think Dr. Carlin has his own personal story about tornadoes and how he was going to, two places he was not going to come when he was in college, Alaska and Kansas, because we had tornadoes. So that's something that we battle.
At least we don't have hurricanes.
At least we don't have hurricanes, that's right. Everybody has something and we have tornadoes. But I really feel like recruiting wise, Garden City has been a trailblazer in terms of our recruiting efforts. Here's some examples of that. I put Michigan on there. We started going to Michigan ten or eleven years ago. It really happened kind of on a fluke. We had a gentleman, a young kid looking for a job, found us on like monsters.com or something. We did a phone interview and hired him. And at the time, I was a building principal and I hired him. Sight unseen, it was kind of late in the year. And so as we started having conversations, making arrangements, getting him to come, he was just super impressed with us. And he gets here, he tells us, well, I got lots of friends in Michigan that don't have jobs. And that was really kind of the kickoff to us going to Michigan. And we had some really, really good, successful years there. Sometimes in a season, we would hire as many as thirty people from Michigan, just in this week-long recruiting fair that we would go to. So that really kind of set the tone in terms of what we were doing with our recruiting. Now, when you go to Michigan, you're going to see Great Ben, you're going to see Liberal, you're going to see Dodge. They all have tables around, but I think we were certainly far that forefront. Recruiting materials, again, something that, in a typical recruiting fair, and I'll explain a little bit more of this later individually, but we don't do sit-down kind of interviews when we're there. We really want to make contact. And so a lot of times, we're just sharing our story. And the recruiting materials we have, they're great because they really lend itself to us walking through with a candidate, sharing our story and what we do in Garden City. Again, we've had other people want our information, where did you get it done, how did you design it? Last year, we had to do some new things with our recruiting materials and we had kids do the banners. They designed it for us in one of our graphic design classes at the high school. And that's a cool story that you get to tell people when you're out on the road. This is the kind of atmosphere that we have here that we want you to kind of work in. Utilizing teachers, again, being on the road, teachers are really the impact. Not to diminish our administrators when they go, but teachers are the ones that are making the connections. They've had a similar experience, they've come from that university, they know what it's like, in this particular case, to move fourteen hours away. And they can share with people who are in that situation that, I'm not just giving them a sales pitch, this is really how it is. This is why you should come. I did it and you can do it. So we're utilizing more teachers and again, you'll see other districts that are doing that as well. Student Teaching Incentive. So we started that this year with our Student Teaching Incentive and it's been awesome, really, really good. And guess what? Dodge is now doing it too. So it's going to get out there. We knew we had to kind of strike while the iron was hot, but the more that you have things that are working, the more people are, and no different than us, the more, the more people are going to see them. But again, another example of us being a trailblazer. Universities, along with the United School Administrators, have contacted us just again to tell our story, what it's like to recruit in Garden City. The efforts that we have to go to, the miles we travel, the people we send, the materials, the cold calls, the, just the sheer hours that we spend to get candidates to come here is really amazing and it's impressive. And we have people asking us to share that because they don't understand. Case State is an example. I had one of my old professors call and we were sharing this with one of our leadership classes and she was in awe. She couldn't believe the effort that it took to get teachers to come to Garden City, Kansas. So, and she's really impressed with our school district, I mean, she knows it well. But just to go through that process was big. So it's going to continue to be a challenge based on the teacher shortage that everybody is dealing with.
Before you leave that slide though, in a sense of how much of that twelve to twenty percent turnover is due to retirement as opposed to of choosing to go out there or?
I don't have the numbers. I think last year, maybe thirteen that we had retire last year. Well, we have six hundred and twenty certified staff.
But I just wondered how much, are we losing a lot for retirement or are we killing else?
Well, again, I don't have the numbers to share, but as a state, I would say yes, we're losing more and more people to retirement. This next slide kind of demonstrates that. So 2011, 2012, you guys have seen these slides that we've talked about. This is from an article, summer of 2015, but this is the number that you see in 2012, three hundred and ninety-nine left the state, twelve hundred and sixty retired. And that number is increasing, fourteen fifteen year, you had twenty-three hundred and twenty-six retired. So you are beginning to see more and more of that. So as people are, you know, timing out, getting ready to retire, they're to that age, they've certainly, you know, earned it, played long careers. But the problem is, the last colored bullet here is, we don't have the candidates, we don't have the people choosing our profession. So the candidates are just not out there. And it's getting more and more competitive, which again, is kind of why we're in this position where we can't do things the way we've always done it. And so number one, we have to promote our profession and we're trying to encourage teachers to do that. But it's just not, kids just aren't choosing it. Some of it could be, well, there's lots of variables, but some of it could be the media, some of it could be the pressure, some of it could be accountability. I mean, there's, there's lots of different things that could be impacting, but the reality is, they're just not. They're not choosing education as a career and that's, that's kind of, it's hitting us now. And so that's pretty major. This is just a Kansas fact. Four years, we've had twenty-three hundred less people in education. You've seen this as well, just, and I'm not going to go through all, just to demonstrate that this isn't just a Kansas problem. We've had some poor media about funding and education and those kinds of things that are happening. But this just isn't a state problem and you can see different states are dealing with the same issue. Arizona had a thousand teaching open, again, this is the summer of 2015, they had a thousand open teaching positions when they started their school year. This last one, California, look at that, seventy-four percent drop in enrollment in teacher prep programs in the last ten years. So again, we're seeing it in Kansas, third universities, California is seeing it as well. So that was some old data that I showed you, summer of 2015. But if you were to get on your devices right now and you Google teacher shortage, this is what you're going to see. Because that's what I do. So teacher shortage leaves, so Pulp, School District Relying on Substitutes, that's in Oklahoma. Teacher shortage will harm Florida's future. National teacher shortage hits Florida hard recruits target Duval County and so on. So you can see multiple states dealing with the same thing, a national problem. This information is how we've tracked our hires. Two really important points here. One is, we want to hire Kansas kids. That's always our goal. We can get them local, great, again, a focus for our Grow Your Own program. But even statewide, we feel like we have better opportunity to keep them here. So that's our first goal. Again, historically, probably fifty percent of our hires come from in-state. So what do we have to do? We got to go on the road. And that's where we go to career fairs. And we have to hire the other fifty percent from a variety of states. And this gives you examples of where we've hired in the last three years. We spend lots of time on the road. But the other important point is that second line, the Michigan line. That's been something, again, was kind of a honey hole, as many as thirty if we would have went back further than this. And last year, we hired two. So now what? What do you do when the well runs dry? You got to find a new well. So we're out on the road. This is a little history of our unfilled teaching positions. This is far, as far back as I could find data. So 2007, 2008, thirty-one openings. It begins to turn around, sixteen, smaller and smaller. You can kind of think about this in terms of when the recession hit. People really weren't wanting to leave jobs, they had a secure job. So you can kind of see that they're staying close, holding their job, maybe not moving. And so continues to go pretty steadily up until about fourteen, fifteen. And then now we're starting to see it, eight open positions, fourteen open positions, and then this current school year, we have thirty-eight open positions. So hopefully, this is it. This is the peak of our numbers. Yes, ma'am?
What happened from 2007 to 2010 that, or what do you feel like happened that brought those numbers down so much?
I don't know, that was long before my time in doing this research. Dr. Carlin?
Jennifer, I would say that's when the recession that hit the country helped us. That's when we were hiring thirty a year from Michigan because Michigan was cutting teachers. And, you know, students coming through those prep programs had no opportunity at home. And we were able to hire large numbers of people to fill jobs because they didn't have those options at home. Now, more, more opportunities are coming back from these other places. And we're not able to hire the numbers of people that we have in those places. So I don't think that was really, other than the fact that we found Michigan, I don't think that was really a school district thing. I think it was forces outside the district.
So your recruiting strategy got a little changed within that time?
Yeah, other than concentrate on Michigan. Even in Kansas, in nineteen, ten, eleven, eleven, twelve, a lot of districts were cutting because of funding. So there weren't, there weren't other jobs for people to go to if you were in Kansas. But also, those, those districts, we weren't competing with them because they were cutting, they weren't hiring. Now, everybody's facing that crunch and so, you know, everybody's back on the recruiting trail and we have more competition as well.
And I was just going to say, it's not just at Michigan that we're competing with Liberal, Dodge, with Great Ben. Kansas City's there now.
Yep.
Some of those northeast Kansas schools that have never been there before. So they are all dealing there.
Blue Valley was there two years ago last time. So the recruiting never really stops. It's, we talked about a recruiting season, but it's, you know, my season is like year-round school. It never slows down. So we started off this year, we had thirty-eight open positions. So what did we do? We had twenty-eight of those and we've talked several different times and we filled with long-term subs. But again, it doesn't just stop there. We weren't satisfied with just having that. We hired ten people at semester time. Two, we filled with student teachers that are going to be done, I think they're going to be done just after spring break and are scheduled to be on contract then. We had three of those positions that were really teachers, they've been through the program, they've done student teaching, but maybe they have an issue with their license. They haven't passed the practice test with the score that they needed. So they're a trained certified teacher, but they don't have a license yet because of this test, as an example. But since that time, we've hired one of those teachers. We've got their license stuff figured out, got them to be under contract. And I just learned today that the second of the three has also finished his license. So that's, you know, again, it's just ongoing. We had ten positions that we absorbed. And again, we were lucky enough, we have a recruiting trail. We sent Renee on, this should demonstrate how we're doing more, is we sent her to Michigan on a one-day trip. Put her on a plane, flew up, went to one university, met with some potential student teachers or student teachers that were potential candidates, talked to them individually because they didn't have a fall fair, so we created our own. And then we flew her back home. And we hired two teachers out of that and we gave her that a semester. Otherwise, those would have went unfilled. So we're constantly doing things to try to fill positions, not just, we got to take care of first semester, so we're good. We have seven student teachers, we've talked about that, Student Teaching Incentive Program. We have seven on tap that'll be done and have taken advantage of the incentive program. So we'll have their service for two years at a minimum. And so that will help offset some of these positions as well. So this is the same slide that I showed you earlier in terms of our unfilled teaching positions. And again, this is all the further I could go back in terms of finding data with our recruiting fairs. Recruiting fairs is probably the biggest thing that we do in terms of hiring teachers. That's, that's our surplus, that's where we're going to. That's where we're gonna get the most candidates. We're doing some other things that we'll talk about that are picking up some steam. But in terms of just our big numbers, that's it, is being out and recruiting them from different places. So you can see, way back when Dr. Carlin had the cushy job in HR, he went to six states and seventeen fairs. Okay? Next year, six states, eighteen fairs, eleven states, twenty-six fairs, thirteen states, thirty-four fairs. And as we get into all that we're scheduled to this year, we'll go to sixteen states and attend forty-four career fairs this season. That started about a week ago, which is two weeks earlier than we've started in the past. So we already have six recruiting fairs under our belt in comparison to the old schedule we used to do. And we'll go hard and heavy until probably the third week of April before our recruiting fairs start to wrap up. One week, we have twelve teams on the road at one time. Third week of April.
Okay, before you go, didn't we also have a decline in, to defend you a little bit there, in how much money we could spend to send people to job fairs during that?
Next question. I'm not letting him off the hook there. Yes, you're right. There was, there was a time in there, but both of those things happened. You know, the budget cuts happened kind of in this time period. But so to, so did the need for us to fill positions. I think if I went back in that eleven, twelve, twelve, thirteen school year, I think we had thirty-some positions or something that year is all that we needed to fill. Is that right? Thirty?
No.
Sixty. Sixty positions that we needed to fill. So, so that's changed as well. You know, we're, we're trying to fill in gaps too. And we're starting out this year, even with those hires, we're gonna start off in the hole.
Well, I understand those years where it's four and a half, five and a half, those are the predominantly the harder fills. PTs, OTs, SLPs. I mean, those aren't typically classroom teaching positions.
So, so this alone, I mean, this is a pretty important graphic just to say, you know, we're, we're forced to do more, but we're responding. We're doing more. And so we're gonna continue to do that. And again, hopefully, our efforts are going to pay off. So with the recruiting fairs, again, I mentioned that's kind of our, our biggest thing. This just gives you a little example of, of what that entails. So teachers and administrators, both at Tana, give me kind of their roles. One is maybe the perspective of the district and what we can offer a candidate with benefits and doing those kinds of things. What classroom size is, just giving them kind of the, the basics. But then the teachers are going, and we're using more and more teachers now too. Very few of our fairs will be attended by a single administrator. So we're getting teachers, we're, we're finding out, you know, what their history is, what colleges they went to, are you still connected there? They are awesome. I mean, they're, they're doing work. They're fronting us before they get there. They're tweeting things out, letting them know that they're coming. So we're spending a lot of time and effort utilizing those people. But then they're there to, again, share their story and, and make that connection. But the whole goal when we're there is just to make contact. So I, I think I shared this with the board too, is, you know, we're out cutting in people's lines and stopping traffic when they're walking by. And, you know, anything we can do to draw attention to ourselves, we're doing it. So that's, you gotta have the right person to be able to do that. You can't be bashful and you have to have personality that you can just approach a perfect stranger and start up a conversation. So, so that's, that's really important. But our goal then is just to make as many contacts as we can. We're gonna give them some information. And we do it through recruiting materials. You can see these little clips that we have. Those are really great. They seem silly, but it's something that you're gonna hang on the refrigerator and they might throw the other stuff away, but they're gonna use that. And Garden City Public Schools is gonna be in front of them all the time. So if their plan doesn't work out, they got a plan B. And sometimes we'll write that. We'll write that right on our recruiting materials. And we'll go and somebody will shoot us down, ah, I'm not interested in going to Kansas. And I'll write, Plan B, write on the booklet. And I'll say, just in case, and we'll give it away. So that, that's the goal, is just to get as many resumes as we can. So once we do that, we're gonna set up a Skype interview within twenty-four hours. So that's an expectation of the recruiters. If you're, they're not traveling back that same evening after the career fair, if you have a, an overnight stay and you're changing from one day career fair to the next, then they're getting on and they're inputting information into a spreadsheet that comes back to my office. And then my secretary is reaching out to these folks and setting up interviews within twenty-four hours. So that's the first step. Once that happens, if it goes well, then we want candidates to come out. And that is a major recruiting piece for us, is having them in our community. But if we have a place that we're broken a little bit, it's that. Because of the time lapse that we have. From the time we do twenty-four hours later, we're reaching out to them. We're setting up a Skype interview. Usually that happens within the first several days after the recruiting fair. But then we want them to come out. So now you're looking at transportation issues. If they're from Michigan, that's a fourteen-hour drive or a train or setting up airfare. And you can't make that affordable unless you stretch it out a little bit, maybe a couple of weeks. Well, in the meantime, they're still job searching. They're still making contacts with other people. And so we lose some candidates sometimes because of that wait period. So one of the things we're doing to combat that is we have, have started, or will start, using this letter of employment. And really what the issue is, is when you go to the career fairs, the competition is fierce. And so what we've seen over the years is more and more school districts are offering these candidates contracts on the spot. And so our biggest recruiting method of getting them here and seeing our facilities and seeing the support of the community and all those kinds of things, we don't get an opportunity to do that because they're offering them jobs. So we're trying to entice them, let them know that we're serious about them, especially the blue-chip candidates. And so we have this letter of employment that we're gonna start handing out to those folks too. But getting them here, we have a really high success rate. Very few kids that come in, tour the buildings, they're gonna get a job offer, that's the last piece here. We do things a little bit differently in Garden City than they do other places. Some other bigger school districts, they have an HR guy. He does a lot of the interviews, does the offerings, and he's gonna appoint them to a building. That's how that works. We don't do that. We, anybody that's got an open position that they're qualified for, they'll meet the principal, they'll do a building tour. Of course, we get them lunch throughout the day. It's very, very busy. But at the end of the day, they're gonna get all the job offers that they have at once. So if all four people that they went and toured with, they all fell in love with them, they're gonna get four job offers. So the candidate has some autonomy to pick their position, which is great. And I think that's a big piece of our retention also. But the administrators have some say in that too. It's gotta fit their building and their culture. So even though we're increasing the fare, going to those, more and more, it's becoming more.